I am informed by the town clerk that a quorum is present, so if each town meeting member will take his or her seat, we will begin the continuation of this special town meeting. Before we begin, we are -- before we begin, we are very honored to have a number of visiting dignitaries from overseas, and I wish to introduce them, and they are at the front of the hall. Anatoly Sliva, who is chairman, committee on local self-government, state of Duma of the Russian Federation. Sergey A. Chapovalov, chairman, committee on the Federation and Regional Policy, state of Duma of the Russian Federation. Alexander Kotenko, deputy minister for Nationalities and Regional Policy, government of the Russian Federation. Anatoly Slatikov, from the city of Ichevsk, and head of administration and mayor of the city of Ichevsk. And the moderator recognizes selectmen McCetrick. Kathy Dunphy, chair of the Board of Selectmen.
On behalf of all the town meeting members and all the elected citizens in the town of Milton, I welcome our guests from Russia, and we hope they enjoy seeing a town meeting, which is truly the truest form of democracy. And so we welcome you to Milton. It's great to meet you. The history of Milton.
And from our own Milton High School, we have cats from the high school.
If I might, Mr. Moderator, what we have distributed is copies of excerpts from Hamilton's History of the Town of Milton, giving the history of the Milton Town Meeting, and also a book on the Suffolk Resolves, which of course was signed in Milton. And we feel that it is very fitting that the delegation would come to Milton, because this town meeting is really a spinoff of the oldest town meeting in America that was established in the town of Dorchester in 1633, and we were of course part of Dorchester at that time, so we are in fact an extension of the oldest town meeting in the country. And so they are here tonight to see how we do it, so we wish to welcome them. We are on Article 18, which is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide to supplement the appropriation for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 1994, for health and sanitation for animal inspections under Article 30 of the 1994 Annual Town Meeting, and to act on anything relating there too. The recommendation of the warrant committee is that the sum of $1,400 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article. Does any member wish to speak on this? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimously carried. At this time, the moderator recognizes Ann Coghlan, the chairperson of the Library Study Committee, for the purposes of making a motion.
Ann Coghlan, town meeting member, precinct 7. The Library Study Committee moves to consider Article 20 before Article 29.
19.
I mean, sorry, 19.
It's been moved and seconded to change the articles in terms of when they'll be considered to move Article 20 before Article 19, and the moderator recognizes Ann Coghlan to speak to the motion.
We do this because it will make the presentation of background information, we think, more logical, and we also believe that it will help in dealing with the many questions that we know will be asked concerning the library project and both articles.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The motion is carried, we will now consider Article 20. Article 20 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to finish preliminary designs and to prepare a site plan for a new Milton Public Library, to authorize the library trustees to accept gifts and to apply for and use federal and state funds, and in connection with the planning and designing described above, to authorize the Library Study Committee appointed pursuant to the vote under Article 25 of the 1993 Annual Town Meeting, to employ the services of an architect, to prepare working drawings and specifications, to employ the services of such other professional consultants as the committee shall deem advisable, and to report to the selectmen no later than December 1, 1994, all in the name and behalf of the town, and to act on anything relating there too. And the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the sum of $30,000 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article. The moderator recognizes the chair of the warrant committee, Mary Fitzgerald.
Under this article, the Library Study Committee is requesting the $30,000, and it will include some of the items that you see in your warrant. I'd like to make a minor correction under the comment, third line down. These plans would include a design for the interior of the building, not the exterior. Basically, the total cost of the project is $50,000. The library trustees donated $10,000 last year for the use of the committee. They have again donated $10,000 this year, and warrant committee recommends the $30,000 to go with it. We feel that the Library Study Committee has demonstrated the need for a new library.
The moderator recognizes Ann Coghlan, chairperson of the Library Study Committee.
Before I make my remarks, I would like to introduce the members of the committee: Paul Buchanan, Marjorie Jeffries, Philip Murphy, Russell Tremaine, and ex-officio on this committee, Glenn Kaufman, who is the director of libraries. I would like to do three things in my remarks. I would like to give you some background on what the committee has done since July of 1993. I'd like to then talk about the cost of completing the work of this study committee, and then lastly, under Article 20, talk about the needs for the library. The Library Building Study Committee was established under Article 25 of the Annual Town Meeting of 1993 to study space and physical plant needs of the library. At that time, no appropriation was made for the work of this committee. At the 1994 Annual Town Meeting, we requested an appropriation to hire a consultant to prepare preliminary drawings and a site plan. No appropriation was possible last March because of the budget constraints. As Mary has already indicated, the library trustees gave us a grant of $10,000. With this money, we first went through the request for proposal that RFP processed during February, March, and April of this year, and second, we hired the architectural firm of Feingold Alexander Associates. With these limited funds and with our architects, we have, number one, confirmed and refined the extensive needs assessment and building program prepared by Glenn Kaufman and his staff. Incidentally, from this, we were able to determine the size requirement of the building. If it is a new building, we would need 36,000 gross square feet. If it were to be renovation addition, it would be 39,000 gross square feet. And I'd like you to remember that the cost of the building is dependent upon the gross square feet. We had the architects also investigate three sites of our choosing, and I will deal with these details in Article 19. Let me go on to the cost of completing the work of this study committee. The costs are based upon figures supplied by Feingold Alexander Associates, and the final product will be the preliminary plans. The steps that we must take are first to designate a site for the architect, and then the architect will do those preliminary plans. Now, the preliminary plans consist of the following: the building with the layout of all rooms, as has been indicated, parking, and then the total cost. Now, the factors in the total cost are as follows. There will be the building cost, which I've already indicated is directly related to size, and it will be building cost that will be reimbursed if we were to receive state money. The second part of the total cost will be the furnishings, the computer technology, and landscaping. Now, we will use the material from these preliminary plans. First of all, we would need these to by March 2 of 1995, apply for the state funding. Later, we would use these plans for the town for approval by town meeting members, very likely if we were to be successful at the May town meeting. Again, I will talk more about state plans under Article 19. To accomplish what I have just described and Mary has already given you, we do need $40,000 more. You know that the library trustees have just voted another $10,000, therefore, we are asking for the $30,000 for the purposes of this committee as set out in Article 20. Let me go on and talk about the needs of the library as determined by this committee. And I'd like to speak first about the building. Let's look at the age. The original library building is 90 years old, and the children's edition is 36. As to the conditions of the library, there are problems with ceilings, walls, floors. I know you're all very well aware about the glass floors on the older stack area, that these have been closed off for safety reasons. Also, in terms of the conditions of the building, the heating is uneven, the ventilation is poor, and there is minimal air conditioning for staff and none for users. As to space in this building, the total usable space in our current library is 14,000 square feet. The needs analysis, as I have already indicated to you, is over twice that amount, and I would remind you, for a new building, 36,000 gross square feet; for an addition renovation, 39. There is space need for materials, for services, for meeting rooms, for new technology. It is also true that current space is inefficient for delivery of services, and the library lacks a full handicapped accessibility. Lastly, as to the parking, it is currently limited to staff parking with one space available for a handicapped person, and there is no off-street parking for users. A new library will correct these deficiencies. I would like to say one more word, and that is that the new library, no matter which site it is on, will result in the closing of the branches, as has recently been voted by the trustees. During the question period, I have asked Glenn Kaufman to speak about the accommodations that one would use in relationship to closing the branch libraries. In conclusion, then, I repeat, we would like $30,000 to complete the work of this committee, and thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the recommendation carries. Article 19. Well, we've taken a vote, ma'am, it can be recognized if you like, but I'm --
Is this on Article 20?
Yes. I'm about to go to 19 if you wish to speak on that.
I'll speak on Article 19.
Okay. And that's next. To see what site the town will approve for the location of a new Milton Public Library, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire said land if necessary, by purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide for said purpose, including the costs arising out of said acquisition. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept gifts, to enter into any agreements on behalf of the town, and to take all other action necessary to obtain partial or full reimbursement for said costs from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and/or the United States Government, and to use said funds for said purpose, and to act on anything relating there too. And the moderator recognizes the chair of the warrant committee, Mary Fitzgerald, for the warrant committee's recommendation under Article 19.
I believe everyone should have a copy of this, there was a handout, recommended that the care, custody, and control of the land described below be transferred to the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of location of a public library, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to take any action necessary for this purpose. The subject land is the land shown on the Town of Milton Assessor's map as Section D., Block 40, Lot 18, Section D., Block 40, Lot 19, and a portion of Section D., Block 52, Lot 4, containing approximately 1.75 acres, known as the former Voe's School site.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
You didn't take the no vote, you interrupted it, when you said to address her.
Under Article 20?
Under Article 20.
I'd be more than happy to take the vote again, I do believe I took --
Thank you.
I do believe I took a no vote, and if you'll just wait there, Mary. All those in favor of the warrant committee's recommendation under Article 20 say aye.
Mr. Moderator?
Those opposed.
Mr. Moderator?
So I reaffirm the vote. Mr. Mullen, you wish to be recognized?
I do. Peter Mullen, precinct 3.
Okay, now, Mr. Mullen, I will recognize you just as soon as the person I've already recognized is finished, and that's Mary Fitzgerald at the moment. Okay?
Well, I guess I would raise a point of order, Mr. --
And what is your point of order?
If you reopen the question with regard to 19, I'd like to speak to it and ask a question.
If I reopen which question?
I'm sorry, with regard to 20, if you reopen it, I'd like to ask a question.
That has been voted on, and I reaffirm the vote, because one town meeting member --
You didn't reaffirm the vote. You didn't take the vote.
Well, I'm missing something, because I believe I just took the vote again. Now, this --
Mr. Mullen.
No, Mr. Mullen, as I see it, interrupted me after I got the no, and I consider that to be a vote. Am I incorrect on that? Does anybody wish to speak to that? All right, then, I will take yet a third vote, and --
Well, I would ask to speak to the article first and ask a question before it's voted on.
No, I'm going to take the vote, because I moved the question. And I'm actually on Article 19, Mr. Mullen, but I want to be as civil and courteous as possible, and so I will recognize you, and only you, before I take the next vote, as long as the present person I've recognized is finished. And now, Mary Fitzgerald, have you finished your comments? Do you know, Mary Fitzgerald, do you know where we are now?
Do I dare, do I dare to open my mouth? Yes, I do.
A point of order, please.
You're recognized for a point of order.
I can't understand that where we have this wonderful opportunity to instruct the Russians on what true democratic process is, when we don't take a no vote, and don't ask for any discussion on an article.
Okay, all right, listen.
I can't believe what has happened.
I have, I thought I corrected that problem, sir, by suggesting I'm going to take the vote again. I believed, perhaps incorrectly, that I did take the no vote, and in case I didn't, I'm taking a vote again on Article 20. All right, then we will return to Article 19, and I'm recognizing Mr. Mullen, who wishes to speak before I take the vote on Article 20. So we are back at that stage, and let us make no mistake, that that is exactly where we are. Now, is anybody confused as to where we are? We are back on Article 20, I'm going to take a vote very shortly, but Mr. Mullen would like to speak. Mr. Mullen.
In the text of Article 20, it provides that the committee is to report to the selectmen no later than December 1, 1994. And my question is, what the impact of that date is, and whether it has any impact on Article 19, and there has to be an agreement as to site prior to December 1, 1994.
Okay, is that all the questions you have?
Depending upon the answer I get, I don't know.
Okay, well, I might recognize you again, but I'll recognize someone such as Ann Coghlan, if she can answer the question, which is, what is the significance of the December 1 date with respect to your report if a site has not been determined by December 1, 1994? Is that right, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Okay. The moderator recognizes Ann Coghlan.
As I understand it, Mr. Mullen, all committees must report by December 1, if you have any intention to have an article in the annual town meeting, which will be in May this year. And we do report on the 1st of December.
What if the date in the art --
I haven't recognized you yet, Mr. Mullen. Okay? Do you wish to be recognized?
I do.
Okay. Now, look, I'm not trying to be uncivil to anyone, but the only way I can control this meeting is that you wait till I recognize you. Okay? Now, and I'm not trying to be rude to anyone, otherwise I don't have control of the meeting, and we just have nothing but cross-examinations. You are recognized, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. If the date were later that the report was required, and you file your report early, presumably you comply, I'm just wondering whether this, in some way, restricts the process, requiring the report by December 1, and whether we can't make the report date the 31st or February 1, and then, if there are no problems, you can submit your report by December 1 and be able to put it in the warrant, but if more time is needed, you won't be in violation of this article.
Well, as I also understand it, this is because it goes into the annual report, so we would be reporting where we are as of December 1. This December 1, I don't think has any effect upon the work of the committee. This is just, we are asked each year, as all committees are, to make a report, and that goes into the annual, annual report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, ma'am, do you wish to be recognized on Article 20? We're back on 20. Or Article 19?
Well, maybe I have a point of order question, which is, would this be the appropriate moment, Mr. Moderator, to move to reopen discussion on Article 20?
Ma'am, we are back on Article 20.
I know. Can we discuss, are we open for discussion? I thought you were only going to recognize Mr. Mullen.
I am recognizing you for the purposes of speaking on Article 20, if you wish to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, my name is Mary McNamara, precinct 10. I rise today to address town meeting concerning Article 20, and I ask town meeting tonight to vote against any appropriation under Article 20. It is my position that the Library Study Committee has recommended a 1960's answer to a 1990's problem. Clear the land, dig a hole, construct a building, blacktop a parking lot for 90 cars, all to bring people to information. In the 1990's, the physical location of information is rapidly becoming irrelevant. Every year, it becomes faster, cheaper, and more efficient to bring information to people rather than people to the information. I can give you a real-life example. Today, lawyers and law students no longer have to travel to law libraries to do research. Millions of pages of case law and statutes from all over the country are available in their homes and offices, online at the push of a button. How long will it take before a broad range of written work is available online in a similar manner, and that it is in fact going to be a collection which would dwarf the shelf space of any library, and overwhelm the resources of any town? Will it be three years? Will it be five years? Will it be 10 years? It will be soon. And what about the three empty library buildings that we will be left with? I have heard suggestions that they may be used for housing or for office space, but these types of places need parking also, and we know that they lack parking. I ask the town meeting to look to the future. Instead of investing millions, at least six to eight millions of our dollars, in bricks and mortar to force children and senior citizens to travel across town, to work by themselves in this building, why not do as other towns, including Medfield, and construct small electronic learning centers close to people located in schools, senior citizen housing complexes, town facilities, including our current libraries? Are there other alternatives to this library's problems? For instance, I have asked whether or not it has been considered to remove the children's department from the main branch and create a children's library in one of the two branches, thereby freeing up considerable space in the central branch. It is my understanding that that alternative has not been discussed. Why not invite the private sector and ask for their involvement, ask for their investment? Why not challenge the computer companies, the telephone companies, the publishing companies to make Milton an electronic information showcase? The concept of a multiple-location library will be piloted somewhere in the near future. Why not here in Milton? Now, let's spend the money on books where they are irreplaceable. I do not suggest to town meeting that we do not need books. Children need books in classrooms so that they can see, and hear, and touch, and share knowledge in a group environment. And until we can guarantee that in every classroom and on every desk, these children have a copy of each book that they need, how can we think about spending millions of dollars to put books on the shelves in a new library building? Frankly, I question the cost of this new building. Frankly, I question the cost of this new building. I wonder if the current stated costs reflect simply construction costs, or if in fact they will allow the replacement of old equipment, if it will allow for the implementation of new technology, including computer networks. The town just does not have the money, not today, and I dare say not when this question reaches a Proposition Two and a Half override ballot. I have spoken with many people in this town. They are not here tonight. They are parents, however, they are grandparents, and they are people without children, and in fact, I dare say, at least one or two of them do not even like children. Some of them, without exception, however, they all bravely question the expense of a new library building. Without exception, each one of them expressed deep dismay at building a new library when the town's school system seems so financially needed and when the town's financial resources are committed in so many other different directions. I want to go back to the schools. It is not just the physical condition of the schools, the peeling paint, the leaky roofs, the dangerous stairs, the warped gym floors, but it is also the lack of teachers, the overcrowding, the shared textbooks, the closed school libraries. My first-grade daughter is barely six. She sits in a first-grade classroom with thirty students. I believe the term is bordering on something called warehousing. My third-grade son is invited to sit on the floor with a clipboard during his math class. There are twenty-nine students and twenty-five desks in that classroom. Today, my daughter came home from the Pierce School. Her math teacher asked her students to tell their parent that she does no longer have access to the paper she usually uses for math tests, they will use scrap paper for math tests. The town has no greater priority than schools. I repeat, no greater priority. The future depends on how well we educate our children. To a lesser extent, our real estate values rise and fall on how well our school system performs. A new library will not sell your house. A new library is a great wish for this town, but we do not have the money for it. I will support the library in its efforts to improve its current physical plans and to bring the libraries into the twenty-first century. I would vote thirty thousand dollars to improve our current library, but I will not vote thirty thousand dollars to build a new building. I ask town meeting members to vote against this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Rothschild, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. We are the tenor of this debate to Proposition Two and a Half, which has made it impossible to finance the legitimate needs of the citizens of Milton, as they should be. It has pitted need against need, making it difficult to meet any. There is a perception that solving one problem will compromise every other problem. That is unfortunate and something that we, as elected representatives, must fight against. The importance of our library and our schools to our community cannot be overstated. They are the repository of our future and our past. They hold and make manifest our values. They transmit our culture from one generation to another. The libraries are equally crucial to all generations. The new libraries in other towns are not only centers for reading and learning, but for meeting and socializing. They are beautiful places to be. Milton has an opportunity to have an institution of the first quality. It would be tragic if we were to throw it away. I urge you all to affirm Article twenty.
You're recognized.
Renit Void, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I agree with the fellow town meeting member over here that just made a presentation. I just wonder why she didn't discuss the issues of the schools during the schools' presentation, because we all know that the schools are in need, but this is the discussion of the library, not the schools. We would all like to have more town services, the youth, elderly, innovative schools, a state-of-the-art police, more firemen. And why not? We want a quality town. We moved here. But how do we get the monies? We're bound by the constraints of Two and a Half in the monies that we can raise through the tax levy. But that's good, because none of us really like taxes. We may not want an override, because enough is enough, and our paychecks aren't really going up anyway. We really don't want too much industry in this town, because it ruins the character. But with less than six percent industry, we don't really have a great commercial tax base. But we do want better services, so how do we move towards that? Boston Magazine recently discussed the wellness of communities and used schools and libraries as the main indicators as to how vital a town is. Quite a few years ago, we had the chance to build a new high school with quite a large reimbursement rate, and we didn't do it. Luckily, last year, we passed the science facility, and now we have a chance to get a new library. Is it going to be free? No, but there will be reimbursement from the state. The state recognizes that the towns need an incentive, and it's the only way that we're going to be able to do it. Now we're plagued with not in my neighborhood. When are we going to stop these self-interest groups and do what's best for the town of Milton? It was referred to having a computer in every home. Well, I think if we look at some of the towns that have this, the Newtons, the Wellesley's, Milton is not Newton and is not Wellesley at this point, and I don't think it's unrealistic. I don't think it's very realistic to think that every home in Milton's going to have a computer, unless we're going to be there to subsidize it. If the State Board of Library Commissioners sees too much arguing, they may go to another town, because, believe it or not, there are over a hundred and fifty towns that are dying to have libraries built in their community. We will lose, we will all lose, if we do not support this library. Milton needs to have a vision for the twenty-first century. We need to go forward and continue to make our community attractive to people. If we continue to fight the battles, we may lose the war and then have a ghost time, ghost town. No one will have to worry about traffic jams, because no one will want to come here. Thank you.
You are recognized.
Joe Manning, Junior, Precinct Seven. If we appropriate thirty thousand dollars on Article twenty, then in Article nineteen, we do not find a site for the library, what's going to happen to the thirty thousand dollars if we can't find a site? Or if there is an injunction brought against the site that we do find? What's going to happen to that thirty thousand dollars?
Very good question. The question is, if you don't have a site approved under Article nineteen, what happens to the thirty thousand dollars? And the moderator recognizes Ann Coughlin.
That's an excellent question, and what I would say to you is that, first of all, we would not spend the money until we know we have a site. On the other hand, one of the things that I was going to say about Article twenty, given my experience in other articles where we were looking to do building, that it is very likely that any committee that is going to eventually get to the point of having to do a building should have money given to it to start with. I'd like to point out to you that we were dependent entirely upon the library trustees in order to be where we are, and I used to think, as we were doing some of this, that we were really quite bold to have gone for an RFP with ten thousand dollars, when it would be very obvious that perhaps we couldn't finish that, but we had expected to come to this town meeting and ask for this money. I would also point out to you that that is what I anticipated, and the committee anticipated, would be our timeline, so that we would have as much time as possible to... The difficulty with the timeline has really been the fact that there is state reimbursement, and I would like to speak about that at another time. Now, I've now lost what the other questions are. Can you help me?
I think that was, was that, that was the only question, right?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ann. Mr. McCetrick, next, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen supports the position of the Library Study Committee on Article twenty in asking for this thirty thousand dollars. And we would like to say, in response to some debate that has already occurred on this article, that, first of all, books are going to be with us for a long time to come, and not every household in the community can afford a computer in a modem. Computers and online services are going to be part of any modern library. We should also not lose sight of the fact that a library is a focus for the community, something that will never be provided by computer screens sitting in individual homes. There is no conflict between public schools and public libraries. It is all public education, and we should not look at the issue as splitting the two. The financing problem is being exaggerated already in this debate. If this proposal goes forward, we're talking about thirty-five percent state funding being worked into the numbers, we're talking about a bond issue that is going to spread the indebtedness and debt service over an extended period of time. We're contemplating private fundraising. This is doable in terms of the capacity of our taxpayers and the need of this community. We have the ability to do this. What we want to make sure is that we do not lack the will to do it. The Board of Selectmen urges you very strongly to give us a yes vote on Article twenty.
You're recognized.
Cherry Anglin, Precinct Two. I want to thank the Library Committee, Study Committee, for the work that it's done. I have not decided how I will vote on this article, and certainly don't dismiss lightly a recommendation made by the fine people who have served on the committee and looked at the problem carefully. I also acknowledge arguments I consider quite cogent and persuasive by Town Meeting Member McNamara, and I would be interested in hearing from the Library Committee as we proceed tonight, something about whether or not you do need a thirty-six thousand or thirty-nine thousand square foot facility, when in fact, it does seem to me that information is reducible to DISC and so forth nowadays, and maybe, this is an issue that has been considered by the committee, and I would like to hear something about that. In addition, if you could, I'd like to have clarified a little bit about the history by which monies were expended to initiate this procedure or help bring this procedure to fruition. I understood the chairperson of the committee to say that money wasn't available at the last meeting, and I'm not quite sure, I certainly can't recall whether we voted against an appropriation for, of ten thousand or twenty thousand, and how it came to be that if there wasn't an appropriation by town meeting, is this something that is customary for the trustees to approach and to make an expenditure of that kind if it hadn't been contemplated by the town meeting? Once again, thanks for the work, and I would like to ask something about those two points.
You're recognized.
Robert Foster, Precinct Seven. If we follow the newspapers in the past week, we will have noticed that NINX is making arrangements with other communication industries, so that they may bring information to the home not through the computer, but through the television. And this opens up an entire mister of opportunities for everyone that owns a television. I'm sure that there's not one household that's without a television. So this lays waste to the idea that you have to have enough money to have a computer, and this is doable within the next three to five years, probably even before we would have our library built. The question I would like to ask also, and I think a vote was taken by the Board of Trustees, that in the event that the grant was not given, granted, that which was applied for, that they would proceed with their plans to build a library in any case? Is that so, please?
Just to clarify things, I don't, with respect to your last question, I believe that the chairman of, chairperson of the Library Study Committee indicated that once the planning is in place, that this whole project will come back to the town meeting. So it isn't as if by authorizing this thirty thousand dollars, you're authorizing the new library. But let's get all the questions. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Just Pat McNaught, Precinct Three. I would like the Warrant Committee, if they wouldn't mind, to go through or walk through with me, step by step, the funding on this. I know there is a scenario in place that we will get reimbursement from the state. What happens if, in fact, we do not get that? What happens if we do? We're responsible for two-thirds. Where will that money come from? What would be the burden assessed to the taxpayer? Have we got a real dollar figure on the cost of a new building to this town? I really don't have enough information myself, and I don't keep my own house in deficit spending, and I don't know of anybody in this town that has any idea where we're going to come across with two or three million dollars for capital expenditure. And I'd need help tonight, kind of assessing that, before I can say yea or nay. I don't want to be the Grinch that stole Christmas. I love libraries. I know their importance to a town, but the bare bones fact is, we are not even properly funding our budgets today. So if someone could just walk me through this from start to finish, I could feel a little easier about the vote. Thank you.
I think that's an excellent question, and I'm going to recognize Ann Coughlin, and I believe there are three questions, Ann, on the floor, from the last two speakers, and they are, do we really need thirty-six thousand square feet? What is the history of the past funding in terms of what happened at the last town meeting, and you're obtaining ten thousand? And the third question from the last speaker, which is a very important question, is to give our town meeting members some understanding of what you expect with respect to the final funding of a, of the completed project.
If I might take the, to leave the question of the thirty-six thousand square feet, and I'd like to call upon Glenn Kaufman to talk about that. He is the main author of the Needs Assessment Study, and that's where the information is. Then I would then go to the question on the money for the March nineteen forty-four. When we came in last March, went to the Warrant Committee and said that we had our ten thousand dollars, but that this was a much more expensive project, we had a very nice discussion with the Warrant Committee, and it turned out, and I did say this, that because of budget restrictions, they didn't have the money for us to have it in March. And I did say to the Warrant Committee that we would be back at this special town meeting. So the reason why we're here, because we had not as yet been funded by the town, and I wonder if that does answer the question of that gentleman, Mr. Anglin, was it? Is this satisfactory to you, Mr. Anglin?
I certainly appreciate the implication, Ms. Coughlin. I'd like to know quite precisely, when we voted on the library budget last year, did we authorize with knowledge the Library Committee to spend that ten thousand for this effort?
Mrs. Jeffries, I think.
Mrs. Jeffries is recognized.
Marjorie Jeffries, Precinct Five, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. If I remember correctly, we had a long discussion in our trustees' meeting about the necessary money for this proposed study committee, and that was not last spring, that was a year ago spring in nineteen ninety-three. We ended up by not asking for money, we decided that the town didn't have the money, and we would go ahead with a proposal, and if necessary, the trustees would provide some initial funding, and that is exactly what happened.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeffries.
We took it out of the state incentive fund. This is the fund that comes to the library, a grant, really, that comes to the library because they have fulfilled all the requirements for certification. This is something we have had to fight for every year for the last several years, to be sure that we were fully funded in all the ways, had the right number of hours open, had the right number of degrees for our library staff, and did all the, jumped through all the hoops that the Board of Library Commissioners demanded in order to be certified, and we have done that. And we therefore get back from the state about twenty-one thousand dollars, because we have done all those things. So we took the money from that, from that grant.
Thank you. Mrs. Coughlin is recognized to answer the third question, which relates to how you see the funding going for the completed project.
The, the way in which I would see us proceeding, to, we need, of course, to be able to, this is the state funding, we would need the preliminary... We would need the preliminary plans that I mentioned, with the completion of the building and the rooms in the building, and the parking, and the cost factors. We would need to have that done by March the 2nd of this coming year, 1965. We have to have that. The $30,000 and a site would put us in a position to be able to file for the state monies. But we must make first the March 2nd date. The next thing that would have to happen in terms of the regulations, the state regulations, would be that we would have to come to the May meeting, annual meeting, and we would have to ask at that time for approval of the project. Now, at that time, at the end of the preliminary studies, we would know the cost factors. So we would know the total cost. That would include the building, the landscaping, the computer technology, the furnishings, and obviously the, everything that one would need. Now, it would be my understanding that at the annual town meeting in May, that we would ask for approval of the project. And that approval would be contingent upon receiving the state money. This is the same thing that was done with the Science Project, that it was approved based upon receiving the state money. Now, let me take you a little further in terms of this project. Let's suppose that we have your approval for the project subject to the state reimbursement in May. We haven't funded yet. It would be necessary to have a special town meeting at this time next year, at which time we would be asking for the funding. Now, my guess would be, there would not be a town meeting, but rather, it would be an override, and that instead of the town meeting next year, we would be doing a vote of the town for the funding for the project. I had intended to talk about this a little bit later, but those are the stages. So the impact of our moving forward would be that eventually, we would come to the voters of the town for an override on what will be an expensive project.
Okay, Ann. Mr. Desmond, are you through?
I think there was one other question, and that was the needs study, and I want Mr. Kaufman to speak on that.
I will recognize Mr. Kaufman for the purpose of answering the question relating to whether or not 36,000 square feet for the proposed project is necessary.
The amount, Glenn Kaufman, Library Director. The number of square feet is based upon formulas developed by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, based upon national standards, on the number of seats that are required in a library in a community of the size of Milton, based upon the usage of the library. The development of the formula of 36,000 square feet has been a work of 18 months, and has been involved, myself discussing this with the Board of Library Commissioners, sitting down with the library staff, tabulating the exact necessary amount of space that we would need for each of the functions that a library requires. As a result of the work of the collaboration, myself, the library staff, and then sitting down with the architect, who is familiar with library services, and has done other libraries, the formula and the final designation of the number of square feet necessary was developed. And we produced the document that outlines in detail the exact requirements for a modern library. I want to also say that, to a number of questions, answer these in a general way, but specifically, a library in the future, and going into the year, into the 21st century, will require, will be multifunctional, in the sense that it will not only require a library to have the conventional books that we've always seen in a library, but we will also require the computer capability in order to access what we call the information highway. This will be no easy feat to access this information, and you will need someone who is skilled, a librarian, in order to guide you through this. It's not something you can do at home on your TV screen. It just requires a great deal of understanding of the techniques for searching tens of thousands of databases across the world. And it is going, the library of the future, libraries that are being built today, and there are many of them in Massachusetts that are being built, and that's the purpose of this $45 million that has been made available by the Board of Library Commissioners, is because there are over 200 libraries in Massachusetts that are inadequate in terms of their physical capability to deliver the information of the future. That's the purpose of Milton's need of a new library, is the result of years and years of neglect that need to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Desmond next, and then Natalie Albers.
Frank Desmond, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Member and Chairman of the Milton School Committee. I'll be very brief, and some people say I'm too brief, but I would like to say that the Milton Public Libraries are an extension of our public school system in the town, and the six members of the Milton School Committee unanimously support a new library. Thank you.
Natalie Albers is recognized.
Natalie Albers, Precinct 3. I speak as, I guess, primarily a granny. I used to be a mother, now I'm granny. And I live in libraries with my grandchildren. I've just had an experience going to a small, little town in Delaware, where I rented a small, little house with no radio and no television, and certainly no computer. And I took my little five-year-old granddaughter. We bought a $10, two-week pass to the library, every day to the library, where we flowed from the children's room into the adult room. I think segregating the children and adult rooms are a mistake. I could see her, and she could see me. And we would spend an hour or two every day in this library, feeling the books, looking at the books, pulling them off the shelf. To think that a computer disk can take the place of pulling a book off the shelf for a five-year-old is so appalling to me that I'm speechless. When I was small, I went to a library in Indiana that was a big oak building, and I can recall the smell of that beautiful library now, and walking up the creaky stairs, and spending hours touching and looking at the books. And I think computers and all are fine, but a library is, is what gives the children foundations for love of knowing things and finding them on their own. I do think it helps the real estate value of the town, too. Because when you go into a town, you look at the schools and the libraries in that order, and a good library will increase the value of our real estate, if you want to get crash commercial about it. But I do take exception to the lady who said that she didn't think they were important for that reason. I don't, I don't think that a reduced area, because the new libraries I've been in today, from Chicago to San Francisco, Port Townsend, Washington, Wilmington, Delaware, I've been into libraries, it seems to me, the past couple of years, studying this problem. There's videotapes in them now. There's a room for socialization. There's places for elderly to go. There's so much more going on in a library today. I think you need more space rather than less. So I urge you to support this wonderful cause for our beautiful town. Thank you.
Diane Dottilio Agostino, Precinct 8. Last March 94, in answer to Mr. Anglin's question, we did actually appropriate the money to hire a consultant to prepare preliminary drawings and a site plan for construction. And I assumed that tonight we might have received a handout or seen what the $10,000 has bought. But I'd ask two questions to be answered. I assume one would be able to be answered by the landfill study committee. It also noted that the committee was going to apply for a state building assistance grant, a grant of $200,000. I'd like to know if they applied, if they were turned down, or if they received the funding. And number two, on what Mrs. McNaught brought up, I don't know if the treasurer or the accountant could give us an overview, but, you know, town meeting is the one that's going to need to make the appropriation. When you put a deposit on a house, it's not just the building, it's the contents. We have the science edition, but I thought we heard that there was not the money appropriated for the contents. Now we're discussing the library. How much will the contents, in real numbers, and maybe in the future, if we could get it, in future town meetings, we get a real financial picture overview, so that we'd be more certain of how we're going to vote if we're going to spend the money. Thank you.
All right. I believe your second question was already answered, that they were coming to the town meeting with a request for an appropriation that would include everything. But before you leave the microphone, I did not at all understand your first question, about the $200,000.
In March of 94, it was noted in the warrant that the committee was going to apply for a state building assistance grant of $200,000.
You want to know what happened to that?
Did they apply? What happened?
Mr. Kaufman.
I was advised by the Board of Library Commissioners to apply for this, some of this $45 million that has just become available, rather than going for the, some portion of the $200,000, because we needed to get on with the building project. It didn't make any sense to go for the $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. You recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm struck by this discussion. Michael Kraft, Precinct 5. How many of you are lying in bed, you're reading a good story, you start to doze off, and the damn computer monitor falls on the floor and wakes you up again? I got to tell you, I find reading a book very pleasurable, and I get a lot more out of reading books than I do necessarily out of reading a computer screen. I happen to share the sentiment, though, that it's very possible to get a great deal accomplished with a computer. I am a lawyer. I rely on these databases constantly. I use them every day myself. I did notice the moderator sort of shaking his head up at the top, at the podium, when that comment was made. And I think that I am on his wavelength when I say that though you can obtain some of the same benefits from the computer, you cannot obtain them all. Now, two nights ago, I got a call from the Library Study Committee urging my vote, and I told them I supported the plan. However, I've heard some very cogent arguments on both sides of the fence here today, and I'm starting to have second thoughts, and I'm really not sure right now how I'm going to vote. But I do want everyone in this room to give careful thought to the following items. We would all like to have a very modern library. We would like to have the very best schools in the nation. We would like to have a center of commerce that we could be proud of. We'd like to have a fire station, or several fire stations, that would be fully staffed so we would never have to worry in the event of an emergency. We'd like all of our roads to be paved as nicely as the corner down by Center Street and Adams Street. We can't have it all, obviously, by what we have right now. And everyone here is going to have to think very carefully about what their top priorities are. Thank you.
Ma'am, you recognize?
Mr. Moderator, Mary McNamara, Precinct 10. I would just like to address some of the issues that have come up since I originally spoke, and I will be brief, I promise you. I never, ever intended to give the impression that it was expected that computers would appear in every home. Obviously, that is a ridiculous assumption. However, what I would like to convey to the group tonight is that what we need are computers in many different places so that they are easily available to everyone, whether you have one in your home or not. And the reason for that is so that people can easily access the information that's available, not just from the town of Milton, but from all the other towns, maybe even all the other states, that would be linked up to their computer. I still have yet to hear whether or not the cost which is being projected here will in fact include all of the new items and equipment that will be required to staff the library. Does the $6 to $8 million, which is being projected as the cost for this item, include all of the furnishings, including any equipment? Thirdly, there was an issue made by one of the Selectmen as whether to not, whether or not the will of the community will support this. And I suggest to the Selectmen that they tap the public out there in the town, and I think they will find the will of the community will not. Finally, to Mr. Kraft's comment about reading in bed, I agree completely. I am a huge fan of libraries. I go to the libraries in this town. I take my children there often. I, too, read in bed, but as my husband pointed out to me, in the future, it may well be very nice to read War and Peace from a computer screen, which is about the size of a book. And if you cannot read the words because they are too small, you just push a button. And if you would like to turn the page, you just push a button. And when you fall asleep and it falls from your bed, it makes a nice soft noise because it is light and plastic. Please, I am not suggesting we do something futuristic or Star Trekkie. I am just asking you to look to the future. We do not have the money to build a new building that costs this much in this town. Thank you.
Okay, I do think your question, I do think your question was answered, in terms of, while there's no definite figure as to what everything will cost, but that the total appropriation will include all the furnishings. Is that correct? And the chair, the moderator recognizes Ann Coughlin. Speak to this and clarify it once and for all.
The final cost figure that I mentioned earlier will have the cost of the building, to put the building up. It will have all of the furnishings, and this was also true, incidentally, of the Science Center, and it will have the cost of very complicated computer technology. And when you do talk about being able to have access to the computers, you would have the access to the computers at the library in what I think will be a very lovely site. So that, and in addition to that, there's landscaping. So there is, there will be a sizable amount of the total cost that will be furnishings as well as the computer technology. I would, if I might, Mrs. McNamara, say to you, that when you first began to talk, and you said we were in the 1960s, I felt very good, because I've been accused of being a 19th century woman, and I finally made it.
You'll recognize, ma'am.
Martha Kemp, Precinct 7. I just want to say, I don't think this is about books versus computers, or the school department versus the libraries. I think it's about dollars and cents. So I have one question that I'd like answered by someone, whether it's the Selectmen or the Warrant Committee, I don't know whose job it would be, but I would like to know, what would the combined financial impact on the taxpayers be for simultaneously shouldering the burden of three major capital projects, which are the construction of the new Science Wing, capping the landfill, and building a new library? Thank you.
Mr. Murphy is recognized to address that inquiry.
I'm going to take a stab at two of the three, at least. As I look over the Warrant Committee table, they all joke and say that I'm not very good with numbers. I chaired that committee last year. I think both Ann and I, as past chairs of the Warrant Committee, look at the financial questions involved in this project, and certainly our concern. Let me, let me just give you the benefit of some of the analysis that we've done. We don't know the final numbers. We have talked about initial proposals, probably in the $5.5 million range for the total project cost. probably in the $5.5 million range for the total project cost. The reimbursement formula is somewhat confusing. It goes up in various stages, so you hear the figure of 35% or 30%. I think it's around a 30% state reimbursement, somewhere in the range of $1.7 million, leaving about $3.8 million that would probably be, have to be raised either through the tax, from the taxpayers, or through private contributions. One would expect that there would be a substantial private contribution to the final project. Interestingly, in the Building Needs Report, Dr. Coghlan went back and looked at the original library that was built in 1904, and the total cost for that was $70,000, $20,000 of which, you know, think of the percentages, $20,000 of which was raised from private funds. So we would certainly look at that to try to bring the cost down. But if it were, let's say it were in the $3.8 million range, and was totally absorbed by tax dollars, and let's say we're financed over approximately 20 years, I get, I'm not sure what the, how you'd bond that, but I think it's eligible for 20-year bonding. I guess the cost on an annual basis would probably be in the range of $300,000. Again, that's a worst-case scenario, assuming that all of the $3.8 you had to go out for. The timing may not work out perfectly, but what I have been looking at in the last couple of days, and certainly have looked at in the past through my work on the Warren Committee, is that portion of debt that we have now, the excluded debt service, for 1980, excuse me, for 1995, that's approximately $650,000 of debt service cost right now that we have added to the tax levy through excluded debt. That is amortizing down to the point where in fiscal 2000, that will have gone down to zero. Now, it doesn't come down fast enough to say that, yes, by the time we begin this project, this can be easily inserted into that same amount of debt that we're used to paying in our tax levy. But certainly by fiscal '98, that $650 is down to $270. So again, within the type of burden that we are used to dealing with as a capital cost, not an operating cost, but a capital cost, that fits. For the science project, let me speak to that a little bit. I don't know the, I haven't seen the projections. I did speak to Kevin Sorge. I can't see him, but he was kind enough to send me a projection of the numbers and so forth, but didn't yet have that bonding. As I understand, that will not be done until January of next year. I believe it's $1 million probably over a 10-year period, so the principal will be somewhere in the $100,000 range, and then some added interest figure. So you're talking about $100,000 or so there. I don't know the landfill costs. I think that certainly, you know, we've had a lot of discussion already at the town meeting about the original $9.3 million, and how that has been whittled down through various proposals. We don't know what the final impact of that will be, so it's hard to project what that will be. But I'm terrible at thinking at my feet. And I too am a lawyer, I guess. Everybody's confessing to that tonight, but... And I should be better at thinking on my feet, but I'm not going to be able to absorb all those other figures. But I'd just point out, I guess, in terms of the debt service, I mean, we're talking about a capital project here. And people, I think it was Pat McNop who said, and I think very wisely, that, you know, you really have to look at projects and think of them in terms of your household and so forth. Everyone knows that, you know, you have to take care of capital items. Credit agencies look at you like you're foolish if you say to them that you don't have any debt. You know, if you compare our debt service for capital projects to other communities in the Commonwealth, the 351 other communities, you'll find that our debt service is traditionally very low, and as I pointed out, is trailing off and will vanish by the year 2000. So I think there's a, I think there's a way to deal with that. I think we have to deal with capital items, and we should as a community. If we're being fiscally prudent, we would deal with the capital items and have a responsible amount of debt service. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ned Rogerson, Precinct Three. I think we're missing one thing here that, or maybe it hasn't been brought up yet, and I might add, I'm not a lawyer. Is that a library basically lets you borrow things for free unless you keep them too long. Then you've got to pay them a little bit. And that's okay, because you borrowed it too much. But all of this stuff, we're talking about modern technology and everything, somehow CompuServe doesn't come to me for free. And the brand-new service that's going to come, that's going to allow me to do something on my TV isn't going to come for free. And there's some people that can't afford these things but want to take advantage of them. The town provides them. You might be able to go to the library, and the town might make a very nominal charge to get on the Internet, or nothing. These services are something that a lot of people in the town need and depend upon. Lastly, if you're reading a book on your little computer in your bed at night, I just wonder where you got it. Maybe you borrowed it from the library. Possibility might occur.
Anyone else wish to speak? Or I'd like to move the question. Ma'am?
Nina Gray, Precinct Ten. And no one has brought up this whole evening that we just roughly have about $500,000 in the budget of the library, but we never give them enough even to open on Friday mornings. And for a long, last year, they wouldn't, didn't have enough money to open on Friday afternoon. They're all, and then they close Friday night. So we don't have enough money in the present given to them, or to give to them, to even open today on Friday mornings. It's about $10,000 or $30,000. That's all we need to give them. And something's wacky about the money.
You, and then you. I do think we should be getting close to the end of the debate on this.
Paul Buchanan.
Okay. I thought Ann Coglan answered that question. Okay. Now, for the sake of order, you know, I mean, that was my understanding. But if you wish to be recognized, you have to go to the microphone like everyone else. Okay, now, that's okay. But I just, I need to keep order, okay? And I will recognize you. And so the issue, the question is, you want to walk... It may be that Ann Coglan did not understand precisely, I mean, what it is you want the walkthrough on, because I thought she walked us through. So you tell me what you would like.
Mr. Moderator, not wishing to be disorderly, my question was not addressed to Mrs. Coglan, who's done an outstanding job this evening. I had asked the Warren Committee if they would walk me through the scenario of funding from the state, losing funding from the state, asking our citizens for an override, not getting an override, the dollar figure for this major capital expenditure. I really just ask for the nuts and bolts of this whole proposal so I can tie up all the loose ends I have. And I clearly believe I'm not the only one in this town meeting assembly that is confused as to the real cost here.
No, your question's quite reasonable as long as somebody has the information and understands the question. Now, is the Warren Committee prepared to address this? Okay, Mary Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
And then, and then, okay.
I'm not a lawyer. I don't read in bed. I don't use my computer. Pat. Basically, the Warren Committee has not projected out all the what-ifs that really isn't our job. We act on things as they come before us. But just to give you a scenario, I would think that it would be the position of the Warren Committee that we have approved these things because we think the voters of the community have the final say. We think it's proper for it to go to the voters of the community. And that would be an override, because we obviously cannot afford it within our operating budgets, as has been attested to many times. What we would do if the community says no is, I would presume, not to build a library. If the community says yes, we would then go forward. It will depend whether or not the community's vote is tied to funding, as it was with some of the other articles. All of those are scenarios that we haven't projected. But it would seem to me the final say is the community. And if the community approves it, we will build a library. And if they don't, we won't, because we obviously cannot afford it within the operating budgets.
Right.
You are recognized.
Thank you. Again, Mrs. Fitzgerald, Mary, would we be asking the voters specifically for an override for purposes of funding the library? And the yes or no on that, on that question would determine whether this library goes forward?
I would presume so.
Thank you.
Okay. You're recognized. Then you, and then...
Briefly, just... Paul Buchanan, town meeting member, Precinct Four, a member of the Library Building Study Committee. I just wanted to share with you a few little statistics and a recent event. When the library was built in 1904, the population of the town was 8,000. Today, there are 14,000 library cards in the town. Just gives you some dimension of the phenomenal increase in need over what the building was designed for. We lack space for materials. People say, let's buy more books. We lack space to even hold the books for the usual services of the library. We need space for meeting rooms. We need space for computers, for printers, for audio and visual tapes. We need tapes, space for paperbacks, for large print books for those who are visually impaired. We need space for photocops. You want indefinite to list, but let me just share one little item. Yes, we're committed to technology. We want, in the new library, to have every capability electronically and otherwise that would be advancing and giving greater access to all the information that is available. Recently, the library attempted to have another line put in, just a simple telephone line, you say hello, you know, that sort of thing. The old-fashioned kind. Ninex was not able to put the cable into our existing building the way things are. This is the state of our library today. I think we've got to keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, you are recognized.
Malcolm Lawson, Precinct Eleven. It seems like during the past few years, the town meeting has been very reluctant and very meager with the money allowed to the libraries to maintain them, even with the threat of losing certification. Even if we would miraculously have a brand-new library in the town right now, what plans has the town made to maintain this library and to assure us that it would not become obsolete in a very short period of time after it was constructed?
Okay. Does somebody wish to address the question of what plans the town has to maintain the library if we build it? Ann Coglan. Recognized.
Well, I think talking about maintaining the building we don't have yet is a little premature. I would guess, for example, that you'd have to have separate maintenance on a building of that size. But I really, I cannot answer that question. But in regard to the second question, and you're going to have to repeat it because I've now forgotten, what was it?
There was just, that was just, that was the only question.
Well, there was, there was another... Yeah, okay. Well, I have a feeling that the newer library would be more efficient. One of the things that the committee has looked at is in laying out a library, and I indicated to you at the beginning that it is difficult to deliver services. You might notice when you're in that library that they have to have a television camera to see what is going on up in the third floor, and you don't have visibility. Somebody mentioned the factor of the visibility. I believe that in terms of staffing the new library, that it would be much more efficient in the staffing because we see it as being on the two levels. Now, when you have to increase your staffing because you're on, let's say, three levels instead of two, then you're buying an individual who will be on your roles as both salary and benefits for many, many years to come. So I would see some greater efficiency in the new library in terms of its overall cost after it is built.
Thank you. Agostino?
Precinct Eight. In response to what Mr. Murphy stated was a low debt service payments right now, we've heard from the Warren Committee, and as someone who looks at the overall picture, some people only vote per article, and they say, well, this is the article on the table. Others, we really want to know the overall picture because all the money has to come out of the same pocket. We do have low debt service. But we've heard repeatedly from the Warren Committee that's because the money, those dollars, has gone to our daily operating needs, and the capital needs have been ignored. So don't get too concerned that we're pushing a point. We want to be sure of the overall picture before we vote. Thank you.
Mr. McCutcheon from the Board of Selectmen.
Just to give the back-of-the-envelope picture on these bond issues, which was asked for and that Phil Murphy started to address. And I think it's a fair question, because unless you see how this can be financed, then naturally everyone is reluctant to undertake indebtedness. But, and this is the best that we can do at this meeting in trying to make a lot of assumptions. But just to give you a sense of what we think the impact would be, if you were thinking about a $200,000 house, which would be about the average assessment, under the high school science facility bond issue and debt exclusion that was approved, that was over 11 years. And that was going to be about $13 per year for that homeowner of the $200,000 house. For that same $200,000 house, with respect to the landfill project, you have to make a lot of assumptions. But if we were successful with the Cash for Trash Initiative, if we were successful with the strategy that Mr. Gordon's committee has outlined for us with the Central Lottery, and if we assume that we had no further state aid, which might be a possibility to make these numbers better, we would estimate, for the purposes of this discussion at least, that the impact of a 20-year bond issue would be about $40 per year on that $200,000 house. With respect to the library project, again, you have to make a lot of assumptions about what the bonds would cost and so forth. But taking into account the state reimbursement, if it were a 20-year bond issue, we would estimate that that $200,000 house over the 20-year period of those bonds would pay out about $20 to $25 per year. So if you look at all of those things taken together, the impact is not, is not a drastic impact. You're probably talking about an impact in the vicinity of $78 or $80 on a $200,000 house for these periods, less the fact that Mr. Murphy pointed out that you have some debt being retired, bond issues that we issued in '86 or '87. So that would reduce this gross impact that I've described, and it would be a somewhat lesser figure. So the ability is here to do these projects. And you have to remember that this would be by a debt exclusion override. We would be asking the people themselves whether they were willing to spend this money. So that I think that since we are their representatives, and since we know that these projects are important to the community, we should be willing to ask them. projects are important to the community, we should be willing to ask them. And of course, we would ask them before these bonds would be issued. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, I'm going to recognize Mr. Anglin as the last speaker, and I'm shutting off debate and I'm moving the question. Mr. Anglin, you have the last shot.
I would like to know why we would spend the $30,000 before we ask the electorate. Why not ask the electorate and then decide?
Okay. All those in favor of the warrant committee's recommendation say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and it's carried. And we'll take a seven-minute recess and be back in your seats by 9:15. Please promptly. Please take your seats, town meeting members. Please take your seats. There's a lot to do. All right, if you could all take your seats and come to order. All right, it is now 9:20, and I have at least hopes that we will just whiz right through the rest of these and have full discussion. But just in the outside possibility that we don't finish tonight, and that might happen, and before anybody else leaves, my plan is, because we have elections coming up, here's my thought. Tomorrow's Friday, we won't have a lot of members on a Friday. Monday is the preparation for the election, and the town clerk has a lot to do and has to get up at 3:30, 4:00 a.m. to set up the polling places. Tuesday's election day.
I'll tell you when I leave the house.
And we figure on Monday night, you all want to be home reading all of those referenda articles that you're going to have to vote on on Tuesday, which will take up most of that night. And so, if we do not finish tonight, the next meeting will be at 7:30 on Wednesday the 9th. Okay? Beth?
Do the tip, Joe.
No, because I won't be here. Okay, so that's the way it's going to be. And we are now, I think...
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator? Nope. This lady first.
Yes, Bonnie Joyce Halasy, Precinct 3. Just Wednesday night is an informational night at Milton High School for 7th and 8th graders, if you want to take that into consideration.
Mm-hmm. I am taking everything into consideration, and there are conflicts like that all over the place, and this is the best we can do. I'm sorry.
They...
It's here? No, I was informed that this hall was available tonight. Pardon me? All right, I mean, if it changes, I'll let you know. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Needham, Precinct 3. I would like to suggest in the future, when we have evening meetings the way we did last night, that you inform us in advance when the continued night is going to be.
I agree.
I know it's hard for me to get here tonight. I know a lot of people who couldn't, and had they known in advance that Wednesday would be continued to Thursday, they would have been here. So I just suggest in the future, when you have the evening meeting, to let us know in advance when the second night would be.
Your point is very well taken, and I didn't miss it before you suggested that. What will now be a change, really, in the way we're having town meetings, we will now be having evening meetings. It's a somewhat, and long, evening meetings that don't finish. So, and you have to react to that. If I'd been smart enough, and after all, I am a lawyer. I would have foreseen that this was going to happen. I didn't, and I assure you, and I've talked to the chair of the warrant committee, and we're both in agreement, that we will then, for the future, and this means the annual meeting, which won't be held on Saturday, to try to give at least a couple of days out as to when the meetings will be. That's an excellent suggestion, and we're definitely going to do that. All right, let's get to the business, and maybe we'll finish tonight, right? Now, on Article 19, this is an article that requires a two-thirds vote. So when I do call a vote after full discussion, if it's unanimous, obviously, it will be two-thirds vote. If it is anything other than unanimous, we'll have a standing vote, which is fine, too. And I have read that article as it appears on Article on page 20, and I'm not going to read it again, but I am going to reread the recommendation of the warrant committee, which has also been printed and handed out. But in case all of you didn't get it, their recommendation is, recommended that the care, custody, and control of the land described below be transferred to the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of location of a public library, and that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to take any action necessary for this purpose. The subject land is the land shown on the Town of Milton Assesses map as Section D, Block 40, Lot 18, Section D, Block 40, Lot 19, and a portion of Section D, Block 52, Lot 4, containing approximately 1.75 acres, known as the former Bose School site. And the matter recognizes Ann Coglan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In discussing this Article 19, I will talk about, obviously, the site, and I'm going to talk about searching for sites, and I'm going to talk about the Bose Thatcher, and probably at the end, say a few things about state funding again. Now, in terms of the search for a site, I will be very frank with you, I have lost track of the numbers of sites that we have examined, plus the sites that have been suggested to us. We have worked long hours in looking at the plans that we were given by our architect, and then also making decisions on sites we examined on our own. And I would like to make special recognition of Russ Tremaine, who is on our committee, who is an architect, and also to Marge Jeffries, they did a tremendous amount of work. I would say that Russ is owed a tremendous amount of money by the Town of Milton. Let me begin with the three sites that were specifically examined by Feingold Alexander Associates. The first one was the current library site. That area has 1.36 acres. The current building and its surroundings are on about .8 acres of that 1.36. The Conservation Commission has ruled that wetlands begin 30 feet from the back parking lot. A building, and here's where I have to remind you about building sizes, a building of 39,000 gross square feet would overwhelm this particular site. In addition, none of the architect's designs we reviewed accomplish the need we have for off-street parking. I can go into more detail about cost here, but I would prefer to give you... I can go into more detail about cost here, but I would prefer to give you the overview of all of the sites. The second site that we looked at is the current library site, plus the lot adjacent to the library on Canton Avenue. Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Smith, and I understand that Dan is here, gave us permission to examine their land, and they have graciously allowed the committee to report on our findings. The two pieces of land together are about 2.47 acres. There is still not enough space for adequate parking, and traffic safety could be a problem. And the cost factor on this land, I think, would be very, very high. There would be site development, there are other obvious cost factors. I think that if we were to use those two sites, which I don't think everything would fit, that we would indeed, to be able to make anything fit, and there'd always have to be accommodations, that we could be looking at almost a million dollars more. The third site that we had our architects look at is the Vos Thatcher Site, and you had a handout last night of a piece of paper which is eleven by seventeen in size. And I would like you to hold this sheet of paper with the seventeen side perpendicular to you, and anybody who accomplishes it may have an A from me. If you have actually picked up this paper the correct way, you will see at the top of the page that, we know this is Article nineteen, which I thought was twenty-nine a little while ago. What I would like to do is to work down the left-hand side first, and as you come down the page, you will notice that we have an arrow with an N. That gives you orientation to the north. If you go to the bottom left-hand side of this page, you will see a locust plan. In the locust plan, the three parcels of land that I will discuss are etched in a yellow. The important thing to look at in terms of the locust plan is the fact that you can see the relationship between the land and the Pierce School, as well as the Milton High School. Now, what I would like you to do is to go to the bottom of the page, and please position yourself on Canton Avenue, but watch out for the cars. Now, as you are standing in, on Canton Avenue, and you're looking up, you will see that slightly to the, to the left is where the First Parish Church is. Moving over toward the right and up, you will see the Town Office Building, behind that, the Fire Department. And then, as you work your way up the sheet, you will begin to see the neighborhood area surrounding the parcels that I am about to discuss. If you go counterclockwise and back down, you will see the entire neighborhood. So that is the layout that we are talking about. Now, let me give you the specific parcels in this article, and they're designated in your recommendation this way. And you'll notice that we have labeled the parcels one, two, and three. One, which on the town records is Section D, Block Fifty-two, Lot Four. That is the Vos School land, and that has approximately 1.3 acres. Number two is what we have been calling the Thatcher Land. That is the D forty-eighteen. That has 1.12 acres. The last lot, which is three, is called Thatcher Tax Land, and that is Lot D four-nineteen. And that has .87 acres. The total acreage of the three parcels that you see is 3.29 acres, and this is the amount of land we require, as well as the amount of land that we are requesting. Now, from our rough architect plans that we paid for out of our $10,000, this land can accommodate a new building, a building of 36,000 gross square feet, that is, a new building, the smaller size, plus some expansion into the 21st century and on. Also, it will accommodate, from what we know now, at least seventy cars, and probably more. Now, the factors that must be considered in terms of the architects preparing the preliminary plans is that we will get the exact location of the building and the parking. We will deal with problems of traffic and safety. We will deal with landscaping and other parking in the area, and along the way, deal with building appearance in terms of the exterior, and make that suitable to the surroundings. Now, we need, in addition to this committee and its architects, we need the input of the neighbors, we need the input from the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Town Hall, the First Parish Churches, and I would say, the entire town. Now, let me give you the committee's reason for voting to recommend this site. First of all, it will provide a new building that satisfies the needs of the library. Secondly, it is located centrally in a Milton Historic District, which the present library is in that district. It is located near the Pierce and the Milton High School. It is near, but not on, public transportation, and I believe I could walk up the hill to there. Fifth, we believe that the library will- ... to all of the citizens of the town, well into the future. Let me, in closing on my remarks on this article, talk a little bit more about the state funding. The state, in mid-September, published the regulations for application for $45 million for public library projects. We understand that there will be two rounds for applicants. In the first round, the state will use the 25 of the $45 million, and in the second round, they will use the balance, which is $20 million. We are pushing, or being pushed, to be, and should be, in Round One. Fewer cities and towns will be ready to apply. One can still, if one applies in the first round and doesn't make it, you can correct your mistakes and still be considered in the second round. And obviously, of the two rounds, the greater amount of money is in one. As Phil has already said, we can expect to get almost, not quite, $2 million in aid for this project in Round One. And I would remind you again, that the state aid will be based on the cost of the building, not on the furnishings, and the computer, and the rest. That will be in the total cost, but only the building will be considered. One of the things I had planned to do at this particular point was to talk to you about the implications of going forward with this application, and I'll do it again, because perhaps I'll get it a little bit better. Passage of Article nineteen would allow the committee to apply to the state by March the second of 1995. We would expect, in the annual May town meeting, that we would be seeking your approval of the whole project, and before January first of 1996, the town, in an override vote, I'm sure, I'm sure, would have to approve the funding. So you have a sense of the timing. The committee asks your vote to approve the parcels one, two, and three as sites for library purposes. Thank you.
Moderator recognizes Ms. McCutcheon from the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator and town meeting members, the Board of Selectmen unanimously and enthusiastically supports the recommendation of the Library Study Committee, and urges you to vote yes. This town meeting first voted to form a public library in 1870, with an appropriation of $3,000, to be matched by an equal sum to be raised privately. In 1902, 26 citizens of the town bought the land on which the central library now stands, and gave it to the town. The current central library was built and first opened to the public in 1904, nine decades ago. The Kidder Branch was built in 1928, and the East Milton Branch in 1931, both on land given by Nathaniel T. Kidder. Mr. Kidder, at one time a selectman, gave a great deal of money and service to the library over the years. I mention this town history for a simple reason. Tonight, you and I, as town meeting members, will write another chapter in the history of the Milton Public Library. What that next chapter says is up to you. Milton needs a new library. The current facility is 90 years old. We now have a rare opportunity to apply for a state grant worth about 1.7 million, to meet a portion of the cost. We expect to launch a major fundraising drive to seek private donations for the new library. Private gifts will supplement our local tax dollars for the project. It is ironic that the existing library was built on land purchased by citizens and given to the town. For today, some abutters have objected to the town using public land in their neighborhood, which is already owned by the taxpayers. The consequences of failing to muster the necessary two-thirds vote to cite a new library tonight are too bitter to contemplate. We must apply for scarce state library funding now, while we have this window of opportunity. A similar choice was faced by a town meeting over 90 years ago. They made the decision to build. Look at the benefits that resulted over the last 90 years, resulting from their decision. Young children experiencing the excitement of books for the first time, thousands of students doing their research and schoolwork at the library, adults enjoying literature and learning more about their jobs and hobbies at the library. A new library for us would bring many benefits, a better quality of life, and family opportunities for enjoyment, higher real estate values, particularly for those fortunate to own homes close to a new library. A firm statement by our community of our commitment to the future of Milton. Access by computer to the treasures, treasures of the electronic global village. More efficient use of library personnel in a simplified, modern floor plan. Some may argue we cannot afford to build this library. I say we cannot afford a decision not to build it. Good public schools and good public libraries are two sides of the same coin. Both are facets of good public education. Good public education means informed citizens in a strong democracy. The benefits of a good library is help to preserve our town democracy. Remember your own sense of excitement when you got your first library card, and when you took out your first library book. Make that same excitement happen for the children of Milton's next century. Those Milton children yet to come are counting on you tonight. Dr. Coughlin's committee has worked very hard on this difficult citing decision. Many sites have been suggested and studied. Many of us may have other preferences, but this is a community decision. Tonight, an extraordinary two-thirds vote is needed. We should not second-guess the committee. We should not be scattered in different directions. We should speak with one town voice tonight and support the study committee in choosing the Vos Thatcher Site. In designing and laying out the building, every effort will be made to consult the abutters and to enhance the value of their property. This is probably the most important and far-reaching decision you will ever make as a town meeting member. Tonight, you, as an individual, will touch the lives of thousands that will come after you. The Board of Selectmen urges a yes vote on the selection of the Vos Thatcher Site. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Recognize Mary Fitzgerald, and then you, sir, and then you.
It seems to me, as I was reading this before, we never quite got to the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, which I hope that people would value hearing. The Warrant Committee, very enthusiastically recommends a yes vote on this article.
Okay, yes, sir.
Robert Mason, Precinct Eight. Looking at this lot, these three lots, which one is the building going to have its footprint on? Where is the building going to be located? One, two, or three?
The moderator recognizes Ann Coughlin to answer the question of which lot, if you know.
We do not know at this particular time. We have not had enough money to, to study that factor. This will come with the preliminary plans. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you the answer.
Okay, but you do know-
That's why we need the 30,000.
Okay, Mr. Mason, you're recognized again.
Okay, the, one of the lots that the school was in, correct? And they demolished the building?
Number one.
Number one is Vos and Thatcher.
And in, in practices of the olden times, they left the heating system, which at that time would be asbestos, in the basement and filled it in. Are we going to do bore sites on it? And if we are, what are we going to do? Are we going to give it up, or are we going to get into a much bigger expense to have that asbestos removed?
Well, let me speak to the-
If it's there.
No, one at a time. Ann Coughlin, you're recognized. That's a fair question.
We, we do have information from the asbestos committee on this particular fact. First of all, we do not know that there's asbestos there. We may very well guess that it is there. There would have to be borings done for any building that is being done. And we have talked about, there are other libraries in which they found exactly the same thing. This would have to be built into, if we do find the asbestos, it would have to be built into the, the building cost.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
Well, I don't think she answered the question. So in other words, the removal, if there is, and we don't know, agreed. If there is asbestos there, you are going to remove it, okay? And that is all included in the five to six million dollars?
The answer, the answer wasn't necessarily going to remove it. They were going to deal with it in the cost.
We'll deal with it in the cost.
I don't know whether there's a commitment to-
And I don't believe it's any hazard whatsoever.
You don't believe asbestos is a hazard?
No, 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 no.
Wait a minute, one at a time, Mr. Mason.
I do not believe that if there is asbestos in that land, that it is any hazard at this particular point. At the point at which we would, if we were to find the asbestos there, then it would be removed in a proper manner, so that it is not a hazard.
Right.
And we have, again, Dr. Dumphy is the chairman of the Asbestos Study Committee, and he says, for example, asbestos is harmful only if it is airborne and inhaled. And I'd like to add to that, as a microbiologist, only if it is in a particle size of micrometers.
Okay, thank you.
So I would say that we would be very careful if we found asbestos.
Okay, thank you. This gentleman's recognized.
Michael Craft, Precinct Five. I have some questions with respect to the wording. Am I to understand that the handout, the language in this handout, is the language that we're considering?
That is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee.
And with respect to title of this property, the title, I assume, is vested in the town.
That is correct.
And my question is, if we approve this, is there a way to undo this if ultimately the library is not approved? Or instead, should we add appropriate conditioning language within this to make certain that if it's not approved, and we want the town to regain control of the land, that we are able to do that?
Okay, the, I, the question is, if the town adopts this recommendation, and the land goes to the authority of the library for the purpose of locating a library, and the project is not approved, is there a vehicle by which you can have the land transferred to another agency? And I can answer that, because I am a lawyer, and I looked up all the laws relating to this. this. And it's essential legal question, yes, you can come back and you have another two-thirds vote to transfer it to whomever you want. In other words, the reason there's a two-thirds vote is why I had to look up the law. Under Chapter Forty, Section Fourteen, Fifteen, in order to have a lot of land that is held by one of the town agencies for a specific purpose, do not have that changed so that it goes to another agency for another purpose, one of the steps includes this one where you have to have a two-thirds vote. And so, the answer to your question, if it satisfies you, is yes, you can go through this procedure again and have a two-thirds vote to say, well, no, we won't use it for library, we'll use it for a new police station or a new fire station. But they would require a two-thirds vote, okay?
Well, in an effort to eliminate the need for the two-thirds vote in the future, can we make this grant conditional that if the library is not built, that it will revert back to the present status quo? Then I would propose a motion to amend the recommendation. And I have this in writing, if I could submit it to the moderator.
Before you submit your motion, let me ask John Flynn to speak because there may be a procedure whereby you won't want to file your motion. Mr. Flynn.
If town meeting votes the question as it appears in the recommendation, there is one further step to the process, and it was to be addressed with a future speaker, but I will answer it now. Since the land is held in the custody of the Board of Selectmen, in order to finalize this process, the Board of Selectmen would have to vote to surplus the land, to vote that it's no longer needed for the purposes for which it's held. That vote can be taken either before or after town meeting. In this case, it would have been taken after town meeting. So, the answer to the question is yes, the vote could be conditioned, but the other way to accomplish that purpose is that unless the selectman vote in the future to approve the transfer of custody from them to the library trustees does a missing link, if you will, in the process, and therefore, that transfer would not take place until that time. Thank you.
And I do think, and I read those cases too, that would mean, just to expound a little further on that, that if that vote wasn't taken, that other step, you would accomplish the same thing as your motion would. The land would stay where it is now, okay?
Am I to understand that this vote of the Board of Selectmen would be a procedural step that would take place far in the future, just prior to the time when all the money is in place and just before the bulldozers are about to start rolling? Or is this a vote of the Board of Selectmen which theoretically could take place tomorrow to finalize this?
Theoretically, it can take place anytime.
Well, my concern is, it's very clear at this point that the Board of Selectmen already unanimously approves the plan in place, at least to the extent it currently exists, and therefore, I'm a... I have the concern that the rest of us would like to see the board either retain control until that last step many months or years in the future, or alternatively, build in this condition.
All right, well, that's a fair question. And of course, I don't know what the selectmen are going to do, so I'm going to recognize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Kathy Dunphy. What are your plans on this vote?
Catherine Dunphy, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Nine, Chair of the Board of the Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would not vote to transfer the custody of this land to the library trustees until we were certain of the financing. And that would be, you know, an override vote if necessary and appropriate bond issue or whatever it took to make us sure that this project was going to go through with the approval of the town.
Thank you. You're recognized again.
Thank you.
Mr. McHettick reminds me that the bond issue would have to come back to the town meeting.
Thank you. With all due respect to the current makeup of the Board of Selectmen, however, in the first instance, it's likely to change very soon, as we know, Mr. McHettick has already announced his resignation, and, second, there are proposals afoot to increase the size of the board. I feel that this motion, which I'm going to... which I am now going to make, will add the necessary protection that I think those of us who have concerns about this project would like to see built into it. So, if I may...
Please read your motion first, so this is for the second.
Very well. In the third line, following the word "lot," "public library," I would like to add the following language: Provided, comma, however, comma, that if construction of same is not commenced within three years and completed within six years, comma, then the care, comma, custody, and control of the land described will revert back to the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second to the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Could I have it, Mr. Craft, so I can read it? Now, we have a motion on the floor, so I will take a debate on the present motion, which This is a motion to amend the recommendation of the warrant committee so that the article will now read: Recommended that the care, custody, and control of the land described below be transferred to the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of location of a public library, provided, however, that if construction of same is not commenced within three years and completed within six years, then the care, custody, and control of the land described will revert back to the town. To the Board of Selectmen? Board of Selectmen. And the article... And that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to take any action necessary for this purpose. Do you want to be recognized? Mary Fitzgerald, Chair of the Warrant Committee, is recognized.
The warrant committee gets a chance to ask a question. This is great. Basically, we have a question in my mind as we begin to deliberate and see whether or not we would support this, and I'd like to ask the Library Study Committee, what does the timeframe, is that okay, having those kinds of timeframes on it? Or does it present you with any kind of a problem? Because we don't know the answer.
I'm not sure that I have a good answer to that. Michael, I think it's a good suggestion. First of all, just informally looking at the other members of the Library Study Committee, we have no qualms at all about turning the land back if, in fact, we can't complete the project. So, that's not a concern. As the ever-present lawyer, you know, we're all talking about these things. I get concerned, I guess, putting timelines on it. If, for example, the grant process got slowed down and we couldn't start at a certain point, would we then run into a problem with the three years and so forth? That's my only concern, and so I want to make that very clear. I don't think there's any opposition whatsoever to putting a condition on it. You'd like to have some flexibility so you don't then hamper yourself as you go through the grant process. And remember that we're going, competing against other cities and towns, you know, and you don't want to put in something that will make the library... the State Board of Library Commissioners uneasy about that. So, if we can come up with something that won't hamper us but will allow us to turn it back, I don't think there'd be opposition from our committee.
You're recognized.
Alexander Whiteside, Precinct Nine. An initial question, how is this land currently held? Is it held for a specific municipal purpose or is it held as general corporate property by the town?
The moderator recognizes Mr. Flynn, Town Council.
Although it's described as three parcels in the vote, which is appropriate, it's actually two parcels. The Voest School and the so-called Thatcher Building Site are one parcel. That was purchased in approximately 1884 from Milton Academy. The short answer is, I'm not sure if it's held for a specific purpose. It was not acquired for a specific purpose. But the answer to that question requires an analysis of every town meeting vote since then, and it just... there's no record that's done that. I, as your Town Council, have to assume the possibility it is held for a specific purpose. The other parcel, Lot Nineteen, was acquired by Tax Title in 1963. Again, it wasn't acquired for a specific purpose. The possibility exists that it is held for a specific purpose. That is the reason why there's a two-thirds vote required at town meeting.
Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
So, just to make it clear, the two-thirds vote that you'd be asking for is precautionary. It may be that only a majority vote is actually necessary.
That's correct.
The other point I'd like to make is if the land goes back to the Board of the Selectmen, it should be for a specific municipal purpose. In order that, a further transfer would require town meeting approval. If it were to go back without a purpose stated to the Selectmen, then that protection would no longer be in place.
Mr. Flynn, you're recognized to clarify your...
Mr. Moderator, if the land were to go back to the Selectmen, it could not be transferred from the Selectmen without a town meeting vote. A town meeting vote would be required in any instance. The issue is whether that's a majority vote or a two-thirds vote, but if the land were to revert back to the Selectmen, it could not be transferred to the custody of any other town board without a vote of this body.
Thank you. Mr. Winchester.
Charles Winchester, Precinct Three, Mr. Moderator. I rise to oppose this motion, at least as I understood it. First of all, I think we all should be realistic enough to assume that the Selectmen aren't going to give up this land unless this is going to go through. I think we can rely on the Selectmen to keep jurisdiction of or any property that is not going forward for a legitimate purpose. But, secondly, the wording of the amendment, as I understand it, would make the progress of this project an impossibility. As I understand it, the motion would prevent the transfer unless the project is commenced and completed. It can't even be begun if the transfer doesn't occur. Certainly can't wait for the completion.
Is there...
Ned Rogers.
Mr. Moderator?
Which one?
If I could address my motion for just one moment, please.
No, you can't. I've recognized this gentleman, and I'll recognize you next.
Thank you.
Ned Rogers, Precinct Three. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm having a hard time with this. I'm sorry. I just don't see what we're really arguing about here. I mean, the library people are going to go sell the land after they've got it because they can't build a library and they're really angry at us, or what? I mean, we're talking about we're giving a public land to a public body, and it happens to be in the wrong body right now. So, for technical reasons, we've got to shift it around. Fine. If it doesn't work out, we'll shift it again. Maybe we'll build a school up in Hillside Street someday. Who knows? This is just, to me, a prolongation of the town meeting tonight because I don't think it adds a darn thing. I just don't see what's going on.[1379.15][1379.15](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Craft, you're recognized.
First of all, I've been asked if I would amend my suggested amendment to reflect a longer timeline with respect to the contingency.
Not quiet. Order, please. One of our town meeting members is speaking, and I expect courtesy from everyone. You may continue, Mr. Craft.
Thank you, and I am prepared, at the request that was made of me, to change the years to five and 10 instead of the three and six. Now, with respect to the concern that people have raised that this is a...
Wait a minute, is that seconded? I'll take that as a reframing of your original motion, if that's acceptable.
That is acceptable.
And is that seconded? All right.
With respect...
Now, do you wish to speak to the motion now?
Thank you, I do. With respect to my concern, which is perhaps not shared by many of you, I trust that we will have no difficulty seeing that the land will not be used for some private purpose. But the difficulty I have is that those of us who may wish to see the land utilized as rapidly as possible in the event of the failure of this project, if that should come about, would not want to have to come through the difficult task of obtaining a supermajority, two-thirds vote, once again, merely to get the property back into the control of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
All right. Do you wish to be heard? One more, and then I'll move the question. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Max Horbert.
And Mr. McHettick.
Max Horbert from Precinct One. I'm opposed to this motion for the reason that we've already spoken. It's superfluous. We have the controls within the town government structure. We should follow them.[1496.01][1496.01](APPLAUSE).
Now, Mr. McHettick, and then I'm moving the question, the motion.
Just very quickly, we want to keep it as simple as possible. It's not workable to do the way this motion would have us do it. There are all kinds of legal difficulties, as Charlie Winchester describes. The grand criteria for what approval means would be jeopardized. This is coming back to the town meeting anyway for two-thirds vote on a bond issue. Bond council would have to look at these votes and sign off on these technicalities. The Board of Selectmen is your executive. If we have the vote the way the committees are asking for it, the land isn't going anywhere at all. It will still be in the control of the Selectmen, which is where it is now. We're the ones that have to schedule the overrides. We're the ones that have to issue the bonds only if we find the funding. So, we have all the responsibility for coordinating this to begin with, so we would ask you to simply vote the motion as... vote the recommendation as originally presented. Thank you.
And I will get the position of the warrant committee from Mary Fitzgerald, who's recognized.
The warrant committee recommends a no vote.
Okay, I'm moving the question. All those in favor of amending the recommendation of the warrant committee as described, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
It's not amended. All right. Now, does anyone else wish to speak to Article Nineteen?
Mr. Speaker, I'm at the microphone.
Yes, sir.
I'm dropping a sound off of Precinct Four. I'm sure there are other members of Precinct Four received the same letter from 26 concerned citizens, all the abuddars of those sites that were shown on Mrs... on the advisory committee's map. They were all opposed. There wasn't one person there on that letter who was in favor of this site. I'd like to make a couple of points, one regarding Mr. McHettick's opening statement on the... on this article. The location of the current library back in 1904, if you look at the surrounding areas outside of the two churches and that library, I would venture, I guess, that there wasn't a single solitary property developed in that area in 1904. They built essentially on open land, so that there were no abuddars affected whatsoever, let alone the 26 homeowners that will be severely impacted by this site. The other issue that kind of bothered me here was that somebody at the microphone stated that the study committee should not be questioned. It's beyond me why this study committee should not be questioned when we all know that another blue-ribbon committee was not listened to whatsoever on another issue of dire importance to this town that I'll leave unmentioned. Mrs. Coghlan's mention of the existing site, the additional cost of building on the existing site would definitely alleviate the worries of the abuddars and would still provide a viable site. And I'm sure that the site planners and architects are more than capable of devising a parking plan on that site. I mean, if you have to raise the building up to add parking spaces, then by all means, do so. That site is there. It's not adversely... it would not adversely affect any director abuddars, and it would alleviate all the arguments that are going to arise and the lawsuits that are going to arise from this site. Because I know from personal experience with these people, they are not going to sit on their hands. They're going to come after this town meeting, and they're going to come after the town with a lawsuit. Now, this $30,000 would be like flushing it down the toilet. Because if they win their case, that $30,000 would be spent, gone, and it would be to no purpose whatsoever. I don't see the purpose in it in this particular site. This site is going to cause this town nothing but problems. First, from the abuddars. Second, from the site itself that Mr. Mason brought up. We've seen the history of that site, and they just dropped that building there and just covered it over. And there are... there are going to be site problems there. And if that happens, that $30,000 is going to be flushed twice down the toilet because it's going to cost you even more money, and you're going to have even more lawsuits. I don't understand why this site... it's not the only site... It's not the only site in town. And if this site is going to cause this town so much problems, then for God's sakes, find another site. It doesn't make sense because it's just going to cost us more and more money. I'd like to see a new library. I'm not opposed to a library, but I cannot for the life of me understand why this town cannot find a viable site that will not cause the problems that this site will cause. Thank you very much.
Moderator recognizes selectman John Michael Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Shields, town meeting member from Precinct Two, former town meeting member from Precinct Four, and member of your Board of Selectmen, and member of your fire study committee. I want to address a couple of issues that were just brought up. I want to talk about the difference between a fire study committee and a library study committee. As we said in March, the fire study committee never studied the numbers. The library study committee has studied the numbers, has given you the numbers this evening, and has been honest with you. I want to talk about the lawsuit that was just brought up. The lawsuit that was filed against the selectmen in the playground incident that Mr. Fazano referred to was a lawsuit that really would have been won by the neighbors on a technicality, an issue of notice. It did not get into the issue of whether anyone had the right, the selectmen had the right, to give the land to anybody or donate the land to anybody or lease the land to anybody. So that really, we're talking apples and oranges in both cases. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe strongly that it's the... If you have the chance, as a town, to build a school, science wing with 61 percent funding from the state, you build it. If you have the chance to build for future generations a library with 39 percent funding from the state, you do it. We owe future generations the same consideration that past generations gave to us. I urge a yes vote.
Robert Mason, Precinct Eight. I just have one comment on Mr. Shields's comment. I disagree with the fact that the committee did not know the numbers, but that's irregardless. I have the microphone, sir. I didn't interrupt you. Okay. That's irregardless. As we all know, the selectmen did their study, and we all got that information, right?
Does anyone else wish to speak on Article 19? I'm moving the question. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, I'm going to try it one more time, and I'd ask the noes. I mean, feel free. We'll have a standing vote, but it's obviously not even close. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, and we'll appoint the following tellers. On this side, if Dagmar Pollux, would you please be a teller? And David Sullivan. For the center, Greg Buchanan. Mary Senate Burke. Can't read the reading, Jim. Mary Burke. Dave Lyons over here, and Laura Cahill. Okay? All those in favor, please stand. The center tellers also count the warrant committee, the selectmen, and the two people on the stage. Mary Senate Burke and Greg Buchanan are tellers. All the ayes be seated. All the no... All ayes be seated, please. Okay, everyone may be seated. Section One, ayes and nays. Section Two.
Seven, eight, yes. Four, yes, no.
Section Three.
Forty-one, yes. Four, no.
The vote is 162 to 14. The recommendation of the warrant committee passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 21 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to repair and improve the town's water system, including replacing and cement lining, water mains, painting reservoirs, and replacing meters, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply foreign used federal and state funds for this purpose, to see how such appropriation is to be raised and to act on anything related thereto. And the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the sum of $100,000 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article. And to meet said appropriation, the sum of $100,000 is to be transferred from the water surplus as of June 30, 1994. And Mary Fitzgerald, you wish to be recognized on this one? No. Kathy Dunphy on the Board of Selectmen will be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The next six articles relate to water and sewer costs and are the reason the selectmen called this town meeting, although we picked up a few more articles along the way. First, some good news. The MWRA Advisory Board has just sent out the annual water and sewer rate survey for 1994. Over the entire district, the average annual cost for total combined water and sewer costs increased by only 2 percent. This was the lowest increase in the eight years of the survey, and occurred not only because the state voted $27 million in debt service assistance to the MWRA, but also because the MWRA has their own warrant committee called the Advisory Board, which makes recommendations and which they are wise to follow. So the cost increase for the entire district has been only 2 percent this year. The really good news is that in Milton, the average annual cost has actually decreased. Not a lot, but it's the right direction. I would also like to speak about the capital needs of our water and sewer systems. When we turn on the faucet, we expect clean water to flow out. Water comes to Milton from the Quabon Reservoir in central Massachusetts through the actuadux and storage reservoirs of the MWRA. In our own town, there are 130 miles of pipe, three storage tanks, and about 1,000 hydrants. Our local system has a value of about $30 million. Last year, we spent only $85,000 for capital improvements to our water system. At this rate of spending, we would be assuming the components of our water system to have a lifetime of 350 years, and that's not realistic. It's time for us to invest in our water system. In the next few years, we should replace water meters and identify and replace or reline sections of leaky water pipe. The MWRA water assessment has increased less than the skyrocketing sewer assessment, and if you turn over the recommendation for the library article, you can see those figures. But the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act will mandate repairs and improvements to the MWRA's water system, which will translate to higher charges to cities and towns. Improvements to our sewer system are our first priority, but water capital improvements are also a good investment. The recommendation for this article is that $100,000 be transferred from the water surplus of June 30, 1994. The water surplus is the end-of-year balance. It is not the same as the treasurer's invested cash, which on June 30, 1994, included not only this water surplus, but also the June 30, 1993 water surplus voted by the March Town Meeting, but not used prior to this new fiscal year, and it included about $90,000 in service deposits made by contractors. The water surplus can be used only for water purposes. Part of the June 30, 1994 water surplus will remain after this town meeting. All of that remainder will be used at the town meeting next May to stabilize next year's water rate. The Board of Selectmen support the warrant committee's recommendation for Article 21. Even more important is a favorable vote on Article 22 for additional funding needed for completion of a program to reduce infiltration of groundwater into our local sewer system. We do not want to pay the MWRA to treat rain and snow. The MWRA uses a formula to distribute the total cost of their annual sewer budget among the 60 cities and towns of the district. Until last June, that formula was based on population, not on actual flow. In June, the formula was changed so that in the future, flow will be the major component. Last spring, the Board of Selectmen became concerned that the sewer rate methodology was being redesigned to obtain a yes vote from Boston, which had 33 percent of the weighted vote. All three members of the Board of Selectmen attended the meeting in June when the vote was taken. Nineteen other suburban communities voted to support Milton's motion to amend that methodology, but it was not enough. Now that the sewer rate formula has changed, all communities will be rushing to do the infiltration work. It appears that Boston, which was sitting on a war chest of accumulated sewer reserves, has already reduced their flow. Prior to the vote in June, advisory board documents show that Boston's costs would increase. Now, flow data show that Boston's share of the cost is down, perhaps 7 percent. This could shift about $7 million to the other communities, including Milton. The message is clear. We must reduce infiltration into our sewers, and we must do it at least as rapidly as other communities, or our share of the MWRA district costs will grow. The cost of capital improvements on both the water and sewer systems may make it impossible for the Board of Selectmen to maintain this year's favorable water and sewer rates in future years. But the alternative of these capital improvements would be even more costly. Our goal is to lower your bills, or if that is not possible, to keep them as low as possible, your bills and our bills. The Board of Selectmen support the warrant committee's recommendation on the following six articles.
Does anyone else wish to speak to Article 21? You recognize?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Fellow town meeting members, my name is Richard Livingston from Precinct Eight. I rise to speak to this article in regards to the recommendation for the $100,000 to be transferred from the water and sewer surplus account. The reason I speak to this article is that... Am I to understand the treasurer's report? As you just stated, the treasurer's report was more money than what the actual figures were? The $1.1 million surplus that was alluded to back on August 1st is not that?
You can ask questions, and when you're finished, I'll recognize somebody to answer them.
Well, that's not important. The most important thing is, right now, according to the treasurer or the town accountant, in the water and sewer... The water surplus account has $684,772. The sewer surplus account has $446,595. That's almost a million dollars. But a 1993 town meeting transferred money or was raising money for Article Nine. $157,000 was coming from a water surplus account, $13,000 from a sewer surplus account. Article 12 was coming from a sewer enterprise in our water enterprise account. I would like to recommend, ladies and gentlemen, we don't have enterprise accounts on our water and sewer, and it's time that Milton went to a water and sewer enterprise account, and no longer will any money coming from you for water and sewer bills will be directed to anything other than water and sewer-related purposes.
Even though Milton's accounting system, which dates back to about the turn of the century when we set up a water system, is not an enterprise account under certain state statutes, the effect is the same. The income from water rates goes only for water-related purposes. For the MWRA water assessment, for the operations of the water department, which is part of the DPW, for costs related to water... the DPW, for costs related to water services, including pensions for our water employees, health insurance for water employees, and certain services that would be provided by town council, by the accountant, by the Selectmen's office, no money that is, comes in from the water rates goes to anything that is not properly related to the water services. No money for the sewer rates, the sewer bills, goes only for sewer-related purposes. It does not go to water. It does not go to anything else.
Anyone else wish to be recognized in the article? You can be recognized, come to a microphone, so all your fellow town members can hear you, and ask your question.
There was a statement made in the newspaper which troubles me, and that's what brings me to question the surplus account, that this was a savings strategy. What was that all about? All of this money in the water and sewer surplus accounts was a savings strategy? That's what puzzled me, and that's what brings me to request and recommend the town meeting, at some point, adopt enterprise accounts, as opposed to the surplus accounts. That's why I'm questioning the surplus account. What is...
Finish your comments, Mr. Livingston.
What is a savings strategy underwater and sewer-related purposes? What was the savings strategy of all this money?
All right. Uh, I believe the question is that you read in the newspaper that somebody referred this to as a savings strategy, and you want some town official to answer whether, what, if there is a savings strategy, what that means. Kathy Dunphy is recognized from the Board of Selectmen.
Uh, two issues. One is, um, the town has considered, uh, setting up a separate enterprise account, but Arthur Anderson recommended against it for the simple reason that in enterprise accounting, you would have to account for the fixed assets, which would be difficult to do for an old system. Uh, and the effect would be the same. Uh, it might be a little easier to follow, but it would be very complicated to set up. Uh, for a new, uh, enterprise account, you might want to take that route. As far as a savings strategy, as I said, water money has only gone for water, sewer money for sewer. Uh, we have not set aside a reserve account, as did Boston, to save up money for the rates to do capital work in future years. It might be a good idea to do in the future. If it were to be done, it would be done by town meeting vote. It has not been done. Uh, in the case of sewer, in order to do capital work, we have, uh, borrowed money for bond issues and then paid it back out of, uh, operating budgets from year to year. In the case of water, we have not, uh, we've done small amounts of work on the operating budget, uh, and we are planning to do some additional work this year, and I think it is an extremely good idea to address our water capital needs.
Does anyone else wish to speak to Article twenty-one and the recommendation of the warrant committee? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The, uh, recommendation warrant committee is carried. Article twenty-two, uh, requires a two-thirds vote. So again, if it's not entirely unanimous, uh, we'll have to have a stand-up vote. Article twenty-two is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of financing the construction or reconstruction of sewers and sewerage facilities for infiltration, inflow reduction, or system rehabilitation, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything relating thereto. The recommendation of the warrant committee is that the sum of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction or reconstruction of sewers and sewerage facilities for infiltration, inflow reduction, or system rehabilitation, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars under and pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section seven-one of the general laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the towns therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to enter into any agreements it determines to be necessary in connection with the project and its financing, and is further authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority or any other funding agency. Uh, Mary, did you wish to speak to this? No? Kathy Dunphy? Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to Article twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to the microphone, please.
Mike Smith, Precinct Eight. In, uh, hearing about his surplus and his account, the question is, why are we borrowing it?
Okay, the town meeting member raises, is that, okay, raises the...
I think we should take that from the surplus.
Okay. Question is, why isn't it taken from the surplus, uh, and why are you borrowing? All right. Kathy Dunphy, the Board of Selectmen.
During the past year, the Board of Selectmen, um, hired a consultant who had, um, worked on rate-setting from the MWRA to set up a, uh, detailed structure for rate-setting that would include all of the components that should be included in water rates and sewer rates. And she reviewed, uh, the procedures that the town had been using and recommended some procedures that were very carefully fine-tuned. Uh, one of the things that she recommended is that we continue our, uh, practice of trying to stabilize the water and sewer rates. There was a possibility that if we used, for instance, all of the water surplus, that we could have, uh, lowered the rate for water very, very much this year, but it would have just rebounded next year and gone up very much higher than it's been the last few years. And that's probably not something that I think the majority of people in town would want. Uh, she recommended stabilizing the water rate, and she also recommended stabilizing the sewer rate. If we were to pay for this, uh, out of the sewer surplus, we would not be able to try to maintain, uh, next year's sewer rate. Uh, I, I'm afraid the bad news from the MWRA is that we probably would not be able to continue it at the same level, but it would be that much higher if we tried to absorb all of this, uh, capital improvement cost in one year. Uh, that was, uh, a recommendation that she made and that we decided to follow. In addition, uh, we have an opportunity to receive funding from the MWRA for part of these costs, not all of the costs. We don't have that much money allocated for the town of Milton, but, uh, part of this money will be in the form of a twenty-five percent state grant, and then the state will give us the additional seventy-five percent of only about a hundred thousand dollars at this time. And we will pay that back over five years at no interest. And, uh, that's probably a good deal, and that would be one of the ways that we would borrow the money.
Thank you. Does anyone else, uh, wish to speak to Article twenty-two? All right, now, I need a two-thirds, and if it's not unanimous, we have to have a standing vote. All those in favor of, uh, the recommendation of the warrant committee under Article twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous, and it's carried by a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote of the nineteen ninety-four annual town meeting under Articles ten and twelve, to revise the sums representing indirect costs attributable to the water and sewer enterprises, such sums to be included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated of the tax recapitulation, as water and sewer estimated receipts to be raised from the water and sewer rates, as follows, and I won't read all the numbers, they appear in Article, on page twenty-two, and the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote yes. Does any member wish to address this article? Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
It may seem to be a trivia question, but we're calling this, uh, attributable to the water and sewer enterprise accounts. We just established we didn't have enterprise accounts. Why are we calling it enterprise? They're not statutory enterprise accounts, they're just enterprise accounts? Why don't we have the statutory enterprise accounts?
Okay. All right, is that, is that a question anybody wishes to address? Does anybody else wish to address Article twenty-three? All right. Recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote yes. So if you're voting yes, you're voting with the recommendation of the warrant committee. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article twenty-three is carried, uh, with the recommendation of the warrant committee. Article twenty-four, see if the town will vote to amend the vote of the nineteen ninety-four annual town meeting under Article thirteen for the water and sewer enterprises by reducing the MWRA water assessment by fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and the MWRA sewer assessment by seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars to the final assessments voted by the MWRA in June ninety-four, and there set forth on page twenty-three, the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote yes. Does anyone wish to address this article? If you're voting yes, you're voting with, for the recommendation of the warrant committee. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Recommendation of the warrant committee is carried under Article twenty-four. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of a hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars from the June thirty, nineteen ninety-four end-of-the-year water account balance surplus to be transferred to meet the appropriation for water purposes under Article thirteen of the nineteen ninety-four annual town meeting warrant, reducing the amount to be raised from the tax levy, levy from a million four hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars by a hundred and seventy-six two ninety to a million two hundred and ninety-three two fifty. This sum of a million two ninety-three two fifty represents water estimated receipts raised from water rates to be included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated of the tax recap, allowing the water rate to be reduced from a hundred, a dollar seventy to a dollar sixty per cubic foot, and to act on anything relating thereto. And the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote yes. Does anyone wish to speak to this? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's carried. Article twenty-six is to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of seventy-seven thousand three hundred and six dollars from the June thirty, nineteen ninety-four end-of-the-year sewer account balance surplus to be transferred to meet the appropriation for sewer purposes under Article thirteen of the nineteen ninety-four annual town meeting warrant, reducing the amount to be raised from the tax levy from two million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand seven ninety-two by seventy-seven thousand three oh six to two million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand four eighty-six. This su- sum of two million eighty, eighty-five, four eighty-six represents sewer estimated receipts raised from the sewer rates to be included in Schedule A, local receipts not allocated of the tax recapitulation, allowing the sewer rate to be maintained at four dollars and ninety-five per a hundred cubic feet, and to act on anything relating thereto. I wonder what I said. Whatever it is the warrant committee recommends that the town vote yes. Anybody wish to speak? No? Okay. All those in favor of the warrant committee's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that carries. Now, I'm going to take just one minute to confer here, okay? Uh, 'cause we have some logistical problems, so hang on. Okay. The logistical problem was on, uh, that there is another function going on here next Wednesday night. And, uh, and if we do adjourn, and there has been a motion to adjourn, and it's been seconded, and it's to adjourn instead of seven-thirty, that we start at eight o'clock on Wednesday, November ninth. And does anybody want to speak to whether or not we now adjourn? Because there are only three articles left, but I am informed that there is, we will be here very late if we try to do the last three articles, even though there's only three. One of them, obviously, is the fire station, uh, article, and there's already, I've already received a proposed amendment. And I think on a work night, um, you know, trying to go to twelve or one o'clock is just asking too much. And so, uh, all those in favor of adjourning to Wednesday, November ninth at eight o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned till November ninth at eight o'clock here.